Hey, good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, March 6. At 9:00 AM, Doc, would you leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this fold with liberty and justice for all.
So I assume you would like to speak now, Monty?
Yeah, general comment on anything specific.
Yeah.
Good morning. I wanted to, after last week and all the meetings and stuff, I wanted to thank the staff and administrators and commissioners for hard work that's been accomplished and to their due diligence and professionalism. Staff, great work on the budget and planning presentations. I spent the weekend reviewing the videos that were provided from the meetings that I wasn't able to attend. Finance, keep up the great work. I know that implementing new software and systems is a major undertaking and you're doing it on top of all your existing duties. So keep it going, see it through. The end results are going to be transformative. Judge Crawford, over a year ago, you voted with the commissioners to bring Mr. Parks in to, in order to get the administrator role established and to get the county headed in the right path. At that time, I thought you had realized this position needs, the judge position, needs far more experience, knowledge, and capability than what an elected official could bring to the table. In September of last year, at a work session, the commissioners called you out for what I took as you working at every turn to undermine the process that would bring our county into the future. In my opinion, you've continued to undermine the effort. Last week at the planning, county planning sessions, you made it clear that you wanted to be a part of the hiring of directors and maybe other physicians. Why now? You've been in the current role for, I believe, almost seven years and you were commissioner for six. In the private sector, and honestly, any organization I've ever been a part of, this would not have been acceptable. You were paid far too much money for the citizens of Kirk County to allow such a waste of funds. The county has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars over the last few years to pay for consultants to do the judges' job. In, in doing some research, you are the second highest paid official in the county administrator, county commissioner, judge positions in the state of Oregon, and you make more money than the governor. I've heard you say that you don't want to dischute Kirk County. So explain to me how you making more money than one commissioner, with exception to Multnomah County, isn't doing, isn't dischuting or multi-noming, or making the county more like Multnomah. The Multnomah County Commissioner Chair makes $217,000 a year. A normal commissioner makes $131,000 a year. The Washington County Chair makes $138,000. None of these people get stipends. Our judge position makes $133 plus $6,000 a year in stipends and benefits. The payout is $139,000 a year for such a small county. And since 2017, the judge's pay has increased 69%, $40,390 a year. And in no position I've ever been in or seen has anybody gotten those kinds of pay raises. And I think that's pretty ridiculous. In closing, I ask that the commissioners take this information to heart. I ask that you continue to approve the county, and I ask that you please consider making the changes in structure and pay in order to make sure that all the hard work that has been put into these changes isn't flushed away with a change of decision later.
We may have another public comment from Mr. Mike.
Oh, yeah. Mike, you got something?
Yeah, I'd just like to kind of echo some of the comments from the previous speaker and kind of bring, bring the light back on to the decision about governance of the county and what we're going to do with the administrator's position. I know there's been some delays in the past for one reason or another, but I also believe that those situations could have been avoided had we been cohesively working together as a commission. And, you know, a good leader would be pushing this forward so that the residents of the county know what's going on. And if it's not going to be moved forward, then a little communication would be good. People are sitting out here in the dark, wondering where we're headed, what we're doing, what, what you guys are up to. So, you know, we need to just quit kicking this can down the road, make a decision and, and, and get something moving. And a good leader was put us on that path. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, the consent agenda, any changes from the consent agenda? I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Christina?
Good morning, commissioners. This first request is the next step in our ERP implementation, and that is converting our data from Navoline into TownCloud. You'd heard me speak at the last work session about some of the challenges that we're having with the data that's stored in Navoline, how it's different in different places, and there's quite a bit of cleanup that needs to be done. With IT staffing and finance staffing, the intent of this contract with TownCloud is for those additional data conversions services to help expedite the project, reduce the staff workload, and improve the data that we're putting in TownCloud. We are using the knowledge that the TownCloud team already has with both Navoline and TownCloud to be able to expedite putting this data in and actually combing through it a bit and doing some corrections. So we're not taking garbage out of our old system and putting it in our new system. So that includes the general ledger and mapping our old chart of accounts to our new chart of accounts, which is a huge effort, but will save us a tremendous amount of time in having that all automated. Additionally, with the project codes that we're using to track all of our grants and projects, we are adding some additional functionality to that, which will allow us to better manage projects and grants. Budget, it will also include importing the budget information and making sure all of that is working correctly. Vendors, which is one of the biggest issues and has a tremendous amount of duplicates, as well as different information in different parts of the system, is the other area that we're doing a really massive cleanup. So this request is to approve a contract with TownCloud for the data conversion services at $20,000, which is 150 hours at $150 an hour. This is already budgeted as part of the ERP implementation that utilizes the ARPA funds. So this would not be an additional cost to taxpayers. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have a question. Christina, back a ways, I don't know, a month, whatever, a month ago or whatever, they had asked for $20,000 and we, and the deal was is we denied it. They were coming forward and they were going to try to merge three or four accounts and see how it worked. So is this the 20,000 that was asked a month ago, or is this an additional 20,000 to the contract?
This is actually a completely separate contract. So they did succeed in meeting the requirements that were set about for that additional 20,000 in the ERP contract. This contract is strictly for data conversion and taking information out of Navoline and putting it into TownCloud, which does piggyback on them having to prove that that information could be converted correctly, which was that first 20,000.
And we haven't paid that 20,000 that was denied back, whatever. I don't know what the time span, but whatever ago or happened.
That did get paid. They met the requirements.
Okay, so that's.
To meet, to pay that.
What do we owe on that original contract? So we were at 110, so we owe 140 on that original contract?
When the system goes live. Yeah.
Okay. And this would be an additional 20 on top of that?
Correct. Yes. We budgeted $300,000 for the ERP. So with 150 plus this 20, we're just sitting at 170 right now.
Okay, thank you, Christina.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, Secure World Schools, it looks like it's a.
We need to make a motion on her. I will make a motion to approve the $20,000 expenditure for data conversion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right.
Thank you, Christina. This is a big project we're doing very.
Yeah, and this, that will really allow us to ensure we have really good data and take a little bit of the stress off our county staff in the IT and finance departments while we find people to fill those data analyst positions and that senior accountant position.
Okay, Secure World Schools?
So this next request is kind of a conglomeration of two. You'll remember back in December, you approved the Title III request for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which is a partnership with, well, not a partnership, but Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council is who does that work for us. And they have worked with Eric and Andy Pearson at the Sheriff's Office to refine and sharpen the actual contract and what the costs are going to be for our Community Wildfire Protection Update. And I believe the contract is included in the packet for your review, but that cost with the increase in scope of work and then increases for the COIC's rates and adjusted mileage reimbursement rate, it actually increased the cost of that by $8,424, which is more than what was approved for Title III funding. So this request is just to increase the Title III funding to be able to cover the entire amount of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan cost, as well as approve the contract, I believe.
And I think it's important for people to know that there's not really much else we can't spend these dollars on because it's so tight.
Yes. Yeah, but they're very restricted. And this Community Wildfire Protection Plan is actually specifically called out as an eligible use of those Title III dollars.
So with all, you're asking for the $10,000?
Correct.
Okay.
So, and I just have one question, just because I'm interested in finding out. You know, we're contributing this money to COIC, which is great to have them facilitate this. But the county's also, with the GIS is going to be doing considerable amount of work. Are, is the GIS intending to, you know, put out an invoice against this project or because of the amount of work he's going to do? And have we, if he, if they do, do we have that money budgeted?
That's a great question. The new contract that Andy and Eric had been working on with that additional scope of work wasn't available when I sent this in. Eric, does that, is that GIS contract included in that new scope of work?
I'd like to have the document in front of me before I answer it, so I don't sell it forth with misinformation. So let me look into that follow-up with you.
Fine, I just was curious.
Yeah, that's a really good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, looks like you got another one here, natural hazard. So are we going to pass that before we? Do you want to find out that information before we approve the last one?
No, it's not necessary.
I didn't entertain a motion.
That's a good question. You kind of have comment, but I didn't, just came up issue to speak until.
Uh, sure.
It's just, my, my question is, I saw this when it came out. And is there information that's going to go out, kind of acknowledging to the public what it is and what, what, you know, it's going to cover and how that's going to be interfaced with, with the community?
Yeah, so, oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's the whole plan of it.
Okay, so they just, they'll be event or something that kind of presents that, gives people information about it?
Let Christina want to answer something. Go ahead.
Right now, until we have that contract signed, we can't move forward with the work, but because there are so many agencies involved, they need to have a meeting to get all the agencies on the same page and then move forward with the public information plan. But that is definitely a part of the, the project.
Thank you.
Hey, what happened?
I've done two motions.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve the personal service contract with Central Oregon Mental Health Council.
So if I could, yeah, let's start with the approval of the increase of the Title III funds and then move on to the two contracts for COIC.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. You have it up?
So what I might.
I have it. I found it. Okay. I am making a motion to approve funding from the Secure World School Title III for an increase from the CWPP request of $10,000.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right? Okay, Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan.
We need an act on the second agenda. Is there an action on, on the second agenda item request that was in with this Secure World Schools? Do we need anything on that, Christina?
So there was the Secure World Schools, and then there was the approval of the actual contract with COIC.
So we do need a motion to accept that first. Okay, so we need to come back a little bit, Seth.
Okay, so then we will, I will take a motion on the second part of it.
I move to accept the COIC contract.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, sorry, Seth.
Okay. Natural mitigation plan update?
Yeah, so the next one is the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. This one is also being worked through by COIC and has a similar situation where they went through and revised the scope of work and corrected fees and the mileage rate, which increased the cost about $8,600. We had only approved the initial invoice estimate, which didn't include all of this. These are being paid from the Risk Management Fund. So this includes the, just the request for the additional $10,000 to cover the overage, as well as approve the updated contract with COIC. And just a quick reminder, the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan is a requirement to be updated every five years and is related to our ability to receive funding from FEMA in case of a natural disaster, among a lot of other useful information for different agencies to use if a natural hazard, or if a natural disaster should happen in the county.
You guys have any questions?
No, we're going to have to do probably, we'll, we'll need a two-part motion on this to approve the 10 and then, and accept the COIC. Because you have two agenda requests again, so I'm assuming we need two motions.
Yes.
Perfect.
Here's where they each take one?
You can take them both.
I get to take them both? Now I gotta go back on my laptop. Do you have the first one up?
I just placed the wrong button.
You're here now, you really, okay. You have to bear with the computer illiterate here, I'm sorry. Okay, first one. I move to approve an additional 10,000 from the Risk Management Fund to update the Kirk County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan for original request approved on January 3, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, now I'm going to the second one. Am I going to do that one too?
Yeah.
Oh dear, Brian. Okay, I move to accept the COIC contract to produce a five-year update of the NHMP Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Christina.
Okay, Eric?
Commissioners, what you have in front of you is a proposed amendment to a contract that the county has with Pacific Source Community Solutions. Pacific Source Community Solutions is the state-chartered coordinated care organization for our region. So they provide certain oversight services to Kirk County, Jefferson County, Deschutes County, and a portion of Lake County. What this change will do is swap out an existing Exhibit G and Exhibit H in the contract and replace it with a new Exhibit G and Exhibit H. The remaining portions of that contract will remain in full course and effect. As you see, that this is terribly detailed. But in general, it applies to how the local community mental health programs are going to be reimbursed at what rate and for what services. Rich Treleven, the CEO of Best Care, was gracious enough to attend today. He would probably be able to discuss the particular changes with greater detail than I would be. So I might ask if he could come up and walk us through the most important of these changes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Thank you. My name is Rich Treleven. I'm CEO of Best Care Treatment Services and the Community Mental Health Director for Kirk County. Just to remind you, the, there are three major contracts for community mental health that are the most important ones. One is the state contract with Kirk County called the Community Financial Assistance Agreement, or the CFAA. If you go to the annual county commission meeting and you talk about problems with the CFAA, they'll know that you're in the know. And that's a 214-page contract that Eric and I get to read once a year. And then the second piece of that is the contract with Pacific Source, which is the Coordinated Care Organization for the Community. Both Judge Crawford and myself are on the governing council for that. And then the third is a direct contract with the Oregon Developmental Disability Services with Best Care to provide IDD services, Intellectual and Developmental Disability Services in Kirk County. So this is one of the major contracts, and, and this flows to Best Care through our contract with Kirkham. So so the Coordinated Care Organization contracts with the local mental health authority, which is, does that make, is that semi-clear?
Yeah.
Okay. So last year, the, we had traditionally negotiated this contract in a global contract with the other major healthcare providers. There was the hospital, Central Oregon Independent Physicians Association, Mosaic, which is FQHC. And and that fell apart primarily because of conflicts between COIPA and the hospital. And I don't think those conflicts will get resolved until there's new leadership in those entities. They all took it rather personally, which I found shocking. So this year's contract was negotiated with Kirk Jefferson and Deschutes CMHPs separately, which made it a pretty simple contract to work out. There's just a, a couple of minor changes this year. There was some cleanup stuff that needed to be taken out that was no longer applicable. We did bring in the Health Department, so they're getting some funding through this contract and, and brought Katie and, and the other two Health Department Directors directly into this negotiation, which I think is a major thing in the long run. You know, the amounts were not big this year, but it's, I think it's a major thing. And then this is really in the weeds, but it does matter. There's a couple of, so this contract is structured, there's a set of fee-for-service codes that we build on, and then there's a substantial capitation amount that's, that's there. And I asked for two codes to be added to the fee-for-service code in Q9991 and Q9992, and therefore injectables for medication for opiate use disorder. So those are pretty expensive codes, but we're seeing with the rise in fentanyl in the small counties that that medication is the most evidence-based medication. And so I wanted to take that out of the capitation, put it in the fee-for-service, because our use of that medication has been going up quite a bit. So those are the major changes. There are minor tweaks, basically. Any questions about this contract?
No, no.
No.
Okay, well, thanks for that.
Thank you very much.
All right, I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 amendment to the participating law agreement between Pacific Source, Close Hearings, and Oregon Community Mental Health Programs.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Andy, do you have anything for your report?
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, I've got several things to bring to your attention here. There's a memo that coming from Andy Pearson, it's request to approve the acceptance of an additional $2,500 grant from the office, Oregon Office of Emergency Management. This would be in addition to the $66,296 that has already been awarded. This money would be matched, or matched by the Sheriff's Office and would be used to pay for salaries of county employees previously identified as doing work regarding the emergency management functions for Kirk County. This needs to be replied to by today. So there's agreement to that.
And that was the subject of John Gaudney's letter, right? Did you get that?
I'm not sure if I saw that. I saw Andy's communication yesterday asking how do we get this thing.
That's the letter he sent us, sir. Yeah, John Gaudney.
Yeah.
Possible?
So we would need an action on that.
Do we do our actions? Okay, I'm still trying to figure out my structure, so bear with me. We do our action as you speak, or do we do our action at the end of all of his report?
I think this one would be great if you could, you know, be specific to this. I'm not sure there's any other actions that I have.
Okay.
Would you entertain a motion?
Well, terrible with the, I, I don't really know quite how to word the motion. I don't have John's letter right in front of me.
That's what I'm trying to find. I don't know where.
So if you can find it, it would be a little bit better, but I move to approve. Let me see. You have it? Are you ready?
I was looking for John when it came from.
Okay, okay. I move to approve the extra $2,500 from the Oregon Office of Emergency Management. Do I need to add more than that?
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's somebody, there's not another action. There is.
Okay, well, I need to get a mouse, I think.
I'm just getting misinformation yesterday.
Okay.
So what this is, is Central Electric Co-op is seeking a letter of support for their project, significant capital investment that they're making. And this is something that they've run through. And this is something that they've run through economic development for Central Oregon, through Petco, through the city of Primeville, ETVDA have often requested to provide leverage and support. They're looking for these letters to be submitted by Friday. They've given a couple of example letters. Steph doesn't know much of the information for this. Kelsey with, I'm sorry, Kelsey with Edco may be a great resource to help complete this letter. But it's not a letter that we can get drafted before you're moving. So I'm seeking, I guess, an authorization or approval that we get the letter drafted and then you three can sign it out of court.
Well, for the public, it says here for background, Central Electric is pursuing Department of Energy grant funding towards grid, grid restoration. And the 18.2 million project would benefit the communities in Crook County by constructing a new substation, four miles of new transmission, upgrading 16.3 miles of transmission line with new conductors, metal poles and static wire. And while all the new upgrades will also be more resilient to wildfire threats.
Yeah, I mean, I know.
Increase capacity.
We're constantly trying to find additional energy for different projects that move here. So I think anything we can do to increase the bridge mix there.
Yeah, no, I agree. And they have quite a few programs that are happening.
I wonder if our electricity bills will go down. I doubt it though.
I don't know. It's a grant, right?
Okay, there you go.
So the action I think would be along the lines of supporting the court to draft the letter in support of this and sign it out of court and submit by Friday. So move.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
And then do you need a second motion about writing this letter? I'm assuming this is your prototype there?
It's the prototype and we can work with Kelsey to get that drafted for you. And if any of you have any inputs that you'd like to include in that, you know, coordinate that between Sarah and Brianna, we can do something put together.
Do you need though a motion to approve this prototype also? I guess we should vote on it first and then we should add this. So Brian, I second it. I second your motion. I don't know if I did already.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I move to approve the letter, the prototype letter from Crook County to the US Department of Energy in regarding the Central Electric Cooperative Community Partnership. Is that sufficient?
Yes, thank you.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Briefly, comp study update. Vance Jacobson is meeting with a few of the departments that requested to have one-on-one conversations with him, larger departments. He'll have those wrapped up, I believe, this week. I'll be meeting with the department's directors the next week or two to just address any questions they have. Just make sure that we've got all the concerns addressed. And then look to have a work session with you to have Vance bring that whole plan to you on 3/27. We've got the Personal Services Agreement with Crystal Chellis for the HRIS Project Manager. She's returned that sign. It's with Sarah for a Sess signature. Christina Hanigan. We recall she used to work in HR. She has returned effective Monday with her and Amy yesterday to coordinate priorities for the department. Remember, they each review the HR roadmap report draft and going through that. I'll be sending out to each of you that particular document, seeking your feedback and getting something from you by in the middle of the next week, so I can get them back to consultants. So that too can be something we can talk to you, say at a work session on March 27. Brian and I, Christina, Heron are meeting with Kelly of the city and Steve Forster and Lori, the Finance Director there, to review the five-year financial forecast to ultimately to the final implication we need to complete the intergovernmental agreement with the city for the management oversight of the airport. Now, we'll plan to have that on the 3/13 work session agenda with action on the 3/20 agenda. That's all I have. Unless you have any questions for me?
No. Thank you. Anything from the core members? Okay, we'll move to executive session.
We will now go into executive session under ORS 192602602A to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. We'll also go into it under ORS 1926602H Consulting Council Concerning Legal Rights and Duty of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely due to trial.